I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you all for being here.
There has to be a question.
Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District can be held at 105 Fort Roosevelt, Texas on the 22nd day of May 2019 at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the issuance of the general. Just notice posted to the office in the District on May 17, 2019 at 3:00 PM in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Texas Government Code 551-041, 551-050. It's seven two hours prior to the time we set. We do have the presence of a quorum. Notice that the meeting has been newly posted as required by the law. Absent at this time, we have Board Member Jason Starky who said he was going to be a little bit late. If we may please go ahead and stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the states of America, to your republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings you've bestowed on us on a daily basis and for giving us once again the opportunity to do the work of the Water District. We ask that you continue to guide us and provide us with the wisdom so we can make the right decisions. Father, it is your guidance that helps us to make the decisions that will benefit the people of the Water District. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Moving on to item three, invitation for the audience for public comments. Board of Staff, give, if you would like to comment anything? I saw you wrote something down that you want to address the board or you were signing in? No? Okay. So just want to make sure. Okay. Anything else? Did you like item number four? Consider and discuss for possible approval the minutes of the workshop meeting and regular meeting on May 8, 2019. Anyone had a chance to review that? Questions, comments? Immediately. Motion for approval made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Dr. LaLanne. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Are there any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving along to item number five, General Managers Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, just want to bring up today on the wastewater A license recommendation for Mr. Francisco Guzman is here. He's been working with the district for twenty years. He acquired his A license about a week ago, so he's ready to move forward in his district and stay with us for a long time.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And also, we have Joseph, we don't have anybody there that needs, but it's Joseph Montesvies also at the wastewater treatment plant. I don't think he's here, but he had acquired his C license for the wastewater. And then Noe Katu just graduated with a bachelor in business administration and management. So he's also a degree man.
So he'll be aiming for what, like General Manager?
He's not going anywhere. I'm eight. Then on the other one, the Public Information Officer, we've been kind of borrow a lot of information that's out there. Internship is very hard to acquire because we don't have anybody that's going to, that we already have in-house. So we're still looking into how we're going to open that Public Information Officer position. And anything else that you'd like to add? Eddie or Mary? Because we did have a meeting with one local, I guess it's a...
It's a local firm.
Yeah, a local firm. And they kind of gave us some information that they could do the position, but it's still in and questions, there's a few questions on it still that we haven't been able to follow through and get that RFP going for that one for several reasons. So I'd just like to wait and discuss this at a later date until we get more information. Anything else?
So, well, I mean, my recommendation is to go with an RFP and hire an outside service rather than try to hire someone, you know, we don't think that we have a position that would be sufficient for a full-time position. But we still have some services. I think the best way to handle that would be with the as-needed basis with hiring a firm on a contract.
Okay. So we'll bring more information as we gather. Right now, it's been kind of hard to put it all together yet. So then the audio, video, we'd like to ask you, Mr. Hurst, to join us in one of the presentations that we, we're about to see a video that one of the lowest bidders, we have two low bids, the second lowest bid, we kind of liked the video that they have. We're going to bring another one and would like to invite me to see what you can see that's okay with it and what you might not like of it. So we can join us. When do we have that video available?
Uh, okay.
Next week?
Okay.
Not yet, but next week possibly. When would you be available? We're right here, so hopefully between three days, four days here.
I'm in there.
You are? Okay, we'll call you and then get ahold of you. And that way you could see the video with us. And that's all I have for right now. I'd like to request executive session on right after my presentation here. If you will go into it, but I see Jason's not in yet. So I guess we can, when you get here, we can move into executive sessions because we have five items that are, and I know that Noe and Noel have a presentation, you have to get in that part for...
As soon as Jason gets here, we'll just jump back to the table.
Okay. We can keep going as we go right now. Item number six.
Moving along to item number six. Consider and approve from the table the following items taken for the regular meeting on May 2019. Consider and approve the board committee nominations selected for the upcoming bond election.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Alboz. Seconded by Mr. Houston. All those in favor? They are? Any opposed? None? Thank you. Move on to item seven. Consider and approve the bond committee nominees selected for the upcoming bond election. Do you want to skip this until Jason gets here or...
I think that'd be wise.
I'd like to, yeah, we can bring it back. I was going to suggest actually we consider tabling the item again and give more time for the ad that's out there. It's only been out there for a few days, less than a week, so...
Whichever.
But if you guys want to vote on it, or we can wait for Jason. That was going to be my suggestion. See if we can get some more names out from the public.
Do you want to make a nomination or do you want to make a motion for whatever you choose?
Um, well, I would like to table it.
Motion to table the item. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Houston. All those in favor? They are? Any opposed? None? Okay.
The deadline, just for information purposes, the deadline is on the, we extended it to the 31st now, so we'll be able to handle this at the next meeting.
Okay. Moving along to item number eight. Consider and discuss for possible approval of board travel to attend water reuse at the Texas Conference on May 23 through 29, 2019, to McAllen, Texas.
That is something that I requested. I'd like to go to this conference. It's only for half a day tomorrow and all day Friday. It's on water reuse. It's something that we are certainly not in a position to take on right now, but it is going to be, I think, one of the limited sources available to us for additional water supply. And I think, I'd like to look into it and see how, see what I can get from it, and if it's something that we can start incorporating into the CIP projects for down the road, that would be ideal.
And all we need is a board, for board travel, the board need to...
Motion made by Mr. Houston. Seconded by Dr. LaLanne. All those in favor? They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up to us, and I think it's a great, great item. I didn't even know about it. Bring back some great information for it. Moving on to item number nine. Consider and discuss for possible approval of annual updates to the Hurricane Operations Manual.
I think you might have some attachment in there?
Yes.
Okay, yes. We updated the hurricane preparedness manual, and of course, a lot of the names have changed and updated, have been updated, so I just recommend that you guys look through it and the names are in there for the reason that when we have evacuation, mandatory evacuation, we meet at one of the hotels up in McAllen for the board members to stay and that way we stay together and go as one unit and come back as one unit, you know, so we stick together and make sure that we come back together and evacuate everything that, as we come back in. And steps and procedures are in there for all the management and managers, water treatment, wastewater. So it'd be good for y'all to just get glass through it and find your position in there.
Are the changes highlighted somehow or...
Actually, they were like, were they highlighted, Mary?
No, they're not highlighted.
They were very minimal, just like...
It's staff names, phone numbers.
Oh, okay.
Some of the teachers.
Teachers. And of course, the board members have changed from last year to this year.
And workforce members.
Okay.
Those were very minimal, like...
Not procedural things, just...
No, no, but the margins on the side.
Yeah, okay.
So I just recommended the board of these...
I'll move to, I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Alboz, seconded by Mr. Houston. All those in favor? Aye. They are? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Moving along to item number 10. For the record, we have a board member, Jason Starky, joining the meeting at 5:44 PM. Moving on to item number 10, District Engineers Report.
I looked at and I have here is water rights update. That's the C2 approved, our response to a mandatory distribution for that water rights purchase. And so there was two parts. There was a hundred acre feet that we had classified as, and then we changed that to municipal. And then also we provided that quantity irrigation rate of discovered that two billion area of water existing, and so basically that increases our authorized water rights up to 7,513 feet per year under normal conditions. And if you're down, we're fully graded, we have 5,763 in average. Houston's right here, he's about 400, definitely. So, you know, just covering that for you.
Yep.
We had a conclusion here for the decision.
So you wanted to, you want to go ahead and move all of the executive session items up right now? Is that correct?
Yes, we can get to as far as mine, the last one, the General Managers, and we can come back to the later if you want, without affecting you guys, but yes.
At this time, I've been asked, it's been a request made to, I moved to item number 19. Executive session permitted by the Open Meetings Act, VTC-A, Government Code Section 551-001, Act Sequence Under Section 551-071, Consultation with Attorney Under Section 551-074, Personnel Matters.
And I think item A is under, for the record, 551-087. It's not one of the ones listed.
Item A.
Yeah.
So we do not need to, I should discuss item A?
No, we are, but it's under 551-087, just for the record.
Oh, okay.
You were listing the sections.
Oh, okay. Correct. It was mislabeled.
Well, no, there's just an extra one. So just include that.
Thank you. And item 551-074, Personnel Matters.
Yeah.
At this time, can we go into executive session at 5:45 PM?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Alboz, seconded by Mr. Houston. Are all those in favor?
I love it.
They are? We're in executive session at 5:45. If I could please... Need a motion to...
That's our friend.
...executive session at 5:00 PM, 7:01 PM.
So move.
Motion made by Mr. Alboz.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Starky. All those in favor?
Aye.
We're out of executive session. Item A, update on Long Island Village Water Distribution and Wastewater Collection Improvement. A motion to proceed is directed. Need a motion?
I have motion. So move.
Motion made by Dr. LaLanne.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Starky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? Motion carries to proceed as directed. Item B, update on legal matters with council concerning open records request. No action. Item C, update on FEMA update related to Hurricane Dollar 2008. Motion to proceed as directed. Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Dr. LaLanne. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion three. Item D, update on legal matters concerning rate payers of field of raw water. No action. Item E, deliberation regarding the evaluation of district general manager. Also no action. So we are going to bounce back to item 16? No, I'm sorry, item 11. Discuss and approve a resolution authorizing initiatives of Laguna Valley Water, Waterworks and Sewer System Revenue Bonds Series 2019. Board exhale of the bonds to the Texas Water Development Board, authorizing other matters related to the issuance of the bond and providing for an immediate effective date. Resolution number 172-05-49.
This one is that 5.4?
Yes.
Do y'all have any questions on it? If not, I recommend that we get approved.
That interest rate, I highly approve.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
There's a motion made by Mr. Houston for approval and a second by Mr. Alboz for approval. No? People good.
I could never been wrong.
I just wanted to know who the one bad guy was.
I was wrong, but with a...
I think we're clear. There's a motion for approval by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Alboz. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. I'd like to thank Mr. He and Mr. for all you do, and board and staff. Great job. Had a great time working together and appreciate all your hard work for the Water District. Doing well, while you guys are out there. Thanks for the water, thanks for the Water District. Thank you. Moving on to item 12, Director of Operations Report. Update on Manhole Repair and where this director. The director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eddie. Basically, what I just wanted to let you all know as far as the manhole repairs, there were four other manholes that were relocated after we had that one that collapsed, and we were ordered to make sure that we had them all completed before Memorial Day. And just wanted to let you know that we finished the last one a couple days. So the four manholes that I have recorded are completed. The last manhole was completed at a cost of $4,850. And I'll put a couple pictures in there showing where it was. The, as far as the factor is concerned, again, just to let you know, should you don't know that we have received the factors, the picture that is on there, the new factors that we purchased for King Lock.
It's a beast.
It's awesome.
Yesterday.
Almost hit it the other night.
The staff is really excited about it. That was, we ordered that in February 25th when we issued to you feel, to King Lock. And they were very gracious enough to let us have a owner, which has really saved us because our backup factor has been getting repaired now for a while. So this owner really got us out of buying the bus. They saved us some money and had a rental. And the rental on the factor and what's based on the university paid $10,000. So we had this owner for about two and a half months. We got this one on May 14th, the newest, and they took back the owner. So we had that for about two and a half months, which saved us around $20,000 tonight. So we're very gracious for their owner, and it really helped out during this time. That was it as far as the report for the manhole and the factor. The next item is the, consider and discuss for possible approval of surplus items. The surplus items that I'm bringing to you all, the surplus is having to do with the meters. As I was saying earlier about the inpreparables, one of the issues that we're looking at is cleaning up the area. We've got some surplus items that we need to get rid of, and one of them is meters. And as I've provided for you all several pictures, that goes out to about 4,700, 4,800 meters that we'd like to try and start getting rid of to start cleaning up. We still have, based on the contract, we still have about 1,900 or a little under 2,000 meters that we need to replace.
Any of that we can melt down or? I mean, seriously, can we? No?
No.
Just waste?
No, bro. Yeah. We've already completed about 85% of Laguna Vista, Laguna Heights. We've got, it basically left at Laguna Heights, about 380 meters there. And then we still have some at South Piper Island, we completed by 85% there as well. We've got about 390 there, and the rest of them are in Fort Isabel. We completed about 71% there. So I'm asking for the force to be able to sell those meters that we have.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Starky. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are?
Aye.
Any favor?
Yes.
These are, these are all meters, these are all we've taken out of the ground?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
There's two, I mean, 5, 1 and 2 and 4 and 5 and 8 and 8 meters that we can replace.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Mr. Starky. All those are in favor? Yes? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, I'm still waiting to see an article in the press about the cost savings.
Where, well, I've been working on that, but I'm trying to condense it. I've got, I've got it down to about a page and a half, and I'm trying to get that, we're going to get that out by next week, if you'll like.
Thank you for saving us all the money.
Thank you. Moving on to item 14. Consider and discuss for possible approval of budget transfer for engineering services to support May 20, 2019 bond election.
Do something up ready since he's still talking.
Yes.
Yeah, this first one is the, is the transfer to cover the interior expense for the interior support of the bond. The item you could grab in the table. We need to increase the budget for $8,725. And so to get that, we borrowed from the capital fund, we had the water pump used vegetable, and then other accounts within the same account. So that's the basis for the first of those.
More to approve.
Thank you for approval by Mr. Alboz, seconded by Mr. Houston. All those in favor?
Aye.
There are any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to 15. Consider and discuss for possible approval of budget transfer in the capital funds to infrastructure.
Yeah, this is strictly a sewer infrastructure account. We've completed phase one improvements with the CSA construction. We had our remaining balance at $82,201. So we went ahead and looked at two other accounts within the sewer infrastructure to do manhole repairs. We paid out the methane monitors, we've installed the monobill, and we started up some sewer rehab pipe for parking and things. So this just balances out.
You already have, I mean, we already have, allocated the money to...
Yes.
Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alboz. All those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item 16. Consider and discuss for possible approval of budget adjustment for the lift station rehabilitation.
This budget transfer is realitying funds. This is for phase two of the Fort Isabel wastewater treatment facility. That project originally contained a sludge holding tank. We've just decided that the stations are in more urgent needs, we're realitying funds from the sludge holding tank to the station, it's just a budget adjustment to more accurately let the direction that this project is going in. And the other item is the paying for the issues cost of this loan or the bond, and we're giving that with funds from the water infrastructure account.
Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Starky. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed?
We do have, Eddie, we do have an account for that, we still have the account for the sludge holding tank that we could add money to whenever we...
Yes. Yes. Motion carries. Item 17. Consider and discuss for possible approval of amendment 3.3, 2.8, deactivating the smart water meter in the customer service policy for the Gemma River Water District Resolution 173-05-19.
So this, this item came from a request from another customer who was requesting, was interested in new construction in our area. This person wanted to know if they build here, if they could be exempt from having a smart meter. The reason being, they presented a diagnosis from a physician saying that they should be limited from having any kind of electromagnetic waves near them. So my recommendation was to, if the customer service committee together, the customer service committee did meet, discussed this, and the recommendation coming out of the committee was that only persons with specific medical conditions requiring limited exposure to such equipment can choose to deactivate their smart meter. And a written diagnosis signed by a licensed physician is required.
I don't understand why any of this is even applied. The meter is 15 feet from the household on the easement. I don't understand why we're doing this. We're setting up ourselves for a bad incident.
I agree. Terrible idea. There's cell phone waves, radio waves, electromagnetic waves that fly throughout everywhere.
The door is opening for something that, I don't see any qualification.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I'm totally against this. I'm just thinking out of the game.
What does our legal think on this?
Um, yeah, I think it's up to you. I don't, I mean...
The next step would be that they would sue us and not do it.
Sue us for what?
Yeah.
They're not a customer. But hey, my next door neighbor, his meter is two feet over from mine. So if I didn't have it on mine, I'd still get all the radio activity from his.
Right.
Now we are on the building easement. I just, yeah, upsetting ourselves.
What kind of, what kind of like documentation have we received that this is legitimate?
We received a signed diagnosis from his doctor.
Have we had, I mean, is that legit though? I mean...
We go go there and yeah, she's legit, the doctor's legit.
Well, the doctor's legit, I mean, but is the diagnosis...
The center...
This is the service.
Did it put a diagnosis on it? Did it have a diagnosis?
Yeah. I don't know if we can ask where this residence is. I mean, is it...
He hasn't built. It was the developer that...
What was the diagnosis?
Electromagnetic field sensitivity.
That's...
You can't even have electricity in your house because the current creates electromagnetic...
Has anyone ever seen Better Call Saul, the TV show?
Yeah.
That's what they're talking about, the guy at the beginning, his brother, who had...
I make a motion to deny. Motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Dr. LaLanne. Are all those in favor? They are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries. Just have it moved out of the center.
My main concern with this issue was that they potentially could sue us for...
They could, and then if it looks like they're really going to sue us, then, and it looks legit, and we can't find a doctor that says it's not legit, then we just move the meter. You know what I mean? Brian, you're going to have a good year.
Yeah, that was, that was my, my only concern with it, and that's why I felt that we needed to at least try to be accommodating, you know?
Well, the board has sued and petitioned from lots of places, and it doesn't seem Well, the board has sued and petitioned from lots of places, and it doesn't seem to mind those, so I'm sure we can handle one small customer.
So, moving back to item, considering your review expenditures from May one through fifteen, twenty nineteen. Do you have a chance to review? Any questions, comments, discuss a little of particular? Motion made to acknowledge by Mr. Houston, seconded to acknowledge by Mr. Starky. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are? Any opposed? Thank you. Item nineteen has been covered. Item twenty has been covered, and item twenty-one is adjourned at seven seventeen P M.